I call January 17th Wayne County Order Commissioners Regular Commissioners Meeting. The invocation today will be by Barbara A. Cock. Will you bow your head, please? Our heavenly Father, we have come together here today to discuss Wayne County's business. Please guide us and direct us to have a positive approach on doing what we need to do to make commitments to the county. We pray that our country will be safe and in the future we continue to have peace and love in our country. Amen. I also have the invocation. Will you please stand?
That's allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Has everybody had a chance to read January 3rd's minutes?
I made a motion that we approve the minutes. It's January 3rd.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do we have any discussion? If not, will you please raise your right hand? So approved. All right, discussion of the agenda. Mr. Crumpler?
Yes, ma'am. I do have some adjustments. Under unfinished business, if we would remove that item, item one, change in landfill hours operation, appropriate budget amendment, remove that. We'll put it on a future meeting. Under the consent agenda, I would like to add one budget amendment for the DSS Social Services for temporary help. We went over that in the previous meeting. And also, under new business, I'd like to add item number three, RSM Harrison Associates awarding the contract for demolition of, for three separate projects. And that would be item number three. And that's all I have.
Okay.
I move approval of the agenda as adjusted.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as discussed. Do I have a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
All righty. Under special presentations, item number one, we have a presentation of employee service pens.
When I call your names, I'm going to start with those getting the one-year pins. If you will, please stand up here so we can get a picture afterwards with the commissioners behind you. So we begin with our one-year pins. Nicole Neal, Public Health Administration. Carolyn Sikora, DSS. Charlotte Broadhurst, Public Health Family Planning. I'm sorry, which one are you? Oh, you're, okay, you are here. All right. Sharon Langford, Register of Deeds. MECO Artist, DSS Income Maintenance. Daniel Ruth, Sheriff's Office. Ricky Hooks, School Resource Officer. Denise Thomas, Detention Center. Ty Kirk, Detention Center. Chelsea Gaskins, Public Health Child Health. Jasmine Cooper, Detention Center. Jaren Billingsley, Detention Center. Max Stapp, Sheriff's Office. Keisha Hill, DSS Regular Services. Dominique McBride, DSS Administration. Julie Smith, DSS Income Maintenance. Jay Sasser, School Resource Officer. Grace Cochran, DSS Regular Services Administration. Ben Farlow, Maxwell Center. Juanita Cornegi, DSS Regular Services. Jonathan Buckram, Sheriff's Office. And we'll move on for our five-year. And for our five-year, beginning with Christina Williams, Maxwell Center. Catherine Bennett, Staff Attorney. Nina Williams, DSS Maintenance. Jay Roberts, Detention Center. Jasmine Hill, Detention Center. Andrew Way, Detention Center. Jennifer Curl, DSS. Daniel Boone, Detention Center. Frank Taylor, Sheriff's Office. Stacy Henson, EMS. And that is it for our five-year.
Did you forget Andrew Neil?
Yeah.
You already got yours. Okay.
Who could forget?
Who could forget that?
All right, for our 10-year, beginning with Deborah Byrd, DSS Income Maintenance. This Betty Lloyd, Facility Services. One of the hardest working people around here. Delbert Edwards, Detention Center. Kelly Carter, EMS. That's it for our 10-year. And we have one for our 15-year, and that's Birthday Girl, Shanna Johnson. Okay, if we can pull out one of the one-year, sir, we have a late arrival with Ms. Sharon Langford with the Register of Deeds. Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to our 20-year. Want to recognize Ms. Brandy Jones. She's not able to be here according to Major Cates, but he wanted me to say something. So she's with the Sheriff's Office. Also, Russ Rice, Russell Rice with the Sheriff's Office. And Michael Biggins with the Sheriff's Office, all receiving their 20-year. Then we have Victoria Cruz Rivera with Public Health Maternity Care Project. And Carlton Greeno with EMS. And that is it for our 20-year. And then finally, our 25-year pins. We have Robert Galamofsky with the, as a School Resource Officer. Sheila Nguyen, Public Health WIC. Francina Belton, DSS Income Maintenance. And Mel Powers, Sheriff's Office. And that concludes our Employee Service Pens. As soon as Mr. Crumpler leaves, just kind of look up at those cameras and on the camera, one, two, three, just smile. There you go. Thank you and congratulations.
Moving on to item number two, a presentation on the CVBG grant approval by Larry Jones.
Good morning, everyone. I tried again. Last time, I guess I was a little out of order, but I appreciate the opportunity.
And we apologize for the mix-up.
That's okay, no problem. But I want to thank Mr. Crumpler for making contact with me to make sure that I'll be available for the agenda. And congratulations, Mrs. A. Cock.
Thank you.
And she's part of our home group in Fremont, of course, as everyone knows, and to the commissioners as well. My name is Larry Jones. I'm president of Nor Wayne Alumni and Friends. We headquarters in Fremont, North Carolina. And just have some areas of concerns and assistance that we need for us to move forward with our project invest in Fremont. We currently have a community grant for the town of Fremont, sub-co-sponsored with Nor Wayne Alumni. And Mrs. A. Cock was one who wanted to help us get this grant. It's for $900,000 and was approved in December of 2021. And it was presented by the governor in January of 2022. And guess how much we have received of that? Zero, not a penny. And that's our concern now in terms of trying to move that forward. We'd like to have the county assistance so we can make sure we move forward that project. And also, as I go through, I guess explain a few other things in terms of what we're trying to do to help improve the county as well as the town of Fremont. And one of the things, the Community Block Grant, we are looking at the Wayne County, looking at industrial park in northern Wayne County, earmark funds for Fremont. And we have an organization, a company, we just started Broken Pieces United. It's an employment service and a reentry program to help the citizens of Wayne County. And again, assistance is needed for the $900,000. And I understand you have a new grant administrator, and maybe that person can help us in terms of the roads that we need to go through. And I did recognize, I think it was in Southern Wayne and one of the developments that the county picked up $900,000 in that area. So we just need that assistance as well. Elementary school that's been building in Fremont, we thank you for approving that. And that's a big help for the community. And we're just asking that you consider that the old site where we currently have the school be considered for the industrial park. And why would you say industrial park? Well, if you look at the growth within the county, you have Southern Wayne and within Southern Wayne and Mount Olive, you have the industrial park that's doing the string of welds and even with the airport. And then we see in central Wayne County, you're in the process of building one off Paytime Road. And I think that's going to be a good enhancement for the county. And one of the residents in the city brought to my attention that if we had an industrial park in northern Wayne County, ATT calls them, they may still be in the county growing and maybe bringing in other potential clients, that they would also follow suit. And mainly because we had no flooding in northern Wayne County in the Fremont area. So in terms of proximity, if you look at the one that you have in Southern Wayne, you have in central Wayne, and if you have one in northern Wayne, that that can enhance the growth. And again, why would you say that location, 795? If you look at other towns, look at Wilson County, look at Johnston County, and we talk about earmark funds, I'm putting all those together. And I know that Kenley has received over $10 million earmark funds as well as micro. And our chairman, she just received $150,000 for earmark funds in Statenburg. So if you look at those opportunities with our county representative, we have a good chance to grow. And then we say we're kind of like waterlogged because of the sewer system and things of that nature, that we need money. But I think it's a good opportunity for the county to bring that money and again, consider Fremont. I think I came before you, maybe about two years ago, and I was offering assistance from Nor Wayne and providing assistance because of the virus. And we still offer that system. We've been doing different things within the county. And today, they are serving food for the food insecurity issues. But again, Nor Wayne can provide some of the good assistance for the county. Now, one of the things, you asked me, you may ask, why is this guy involved? From within the county and within Fremont, because of our organization is there, we have to do things for the community if we have sincerity in terms of any kind of improvement. I currently work Onslow County, and with Onslow County, we have a group, it's called the Capers Foundation. And within that Capers Foundation, we have two city council members, we have two county commissioners, and we have a board of education. I'll provide the names if you'd like, and can look at some of the development enhancements that we have in the county. And as of two weeks ago, regarding the employment issue, we purchased a bus, we started a new business, and they have a transportation, which they're providing transportation for the prisoners. Because we're trying to figure out, if you have people that have been incarcerated and they're coming back in society, and they only get $40, they dropped off, where are they going to go? It's going to be a burden within the county, again, in the state. So with Onslow County, they have this program on reentry. And I think it was last week, they had about 26 individuals that they are transporting to jobs, and they're bringing them back to home to get them on their feet. And part of this thing is what we're doing with Nor Wayne, because I'm working with that group that we're bringing that in. Also, they're looking at incubators that they have at Onslow County, the county commissioners, we're looking at issuing how we can deal with the rail service to improve the economic development in that county. But again, this is facts in terms of what's happening there. Now, also, when I was talking about industrial park and those needs, ATT Center and some other opportunities, and you know there's an issue with the library and as well as EMS. If you look at that in terms of transforming that old school system, that you have spaces there, possible renovation that could reduce the cost, and you did that in Mount Olive when that was renovated. And I know they came from some private funds, but it's a good opportunity for the county to take advantage of that situation. And with that, we know that libraries, schools, they bringing jobs and opportunities. And just as a footprint, I know you recognize some of these things. If you look at housing growth, why are they building new houses in Fremont? And they haven't built one in 15 years. So now they have about three different communities being built. So it's telling us something, there's an opportunity for growth in that area. Just go up the road to Wilson, and you look at the new complex that they built there. Who's there? FedEx. What do we have here? We have UPS. It's an opportunity for them to go in and to bring additional revenue and tax dollars within the county. I'm saying, yes, there's an opportunity for that to happen. So we can talk a lot, and I say words and talks inspire, but I actually get results. So what we have done in terms of Nor Wayne from a private development, we started a company called Broken Pieces United. And basically, we go in and try to find jobs for individuals. That include a reentry program and some others, and also starting new businesses. So again, we're not just asking for something, we're saying this is what we're doing to try to improve the community. Now, the grant, excuse me, now the grant was another component, because we were looking at what could we do within the community and help the town of Fremont. $900,000. I know we don't want that to go to waste. And I know that we want to make sure we take advantage of that. And with that $900,000, that led to some other investment. Now, you may not be aware of this, you may have seen in the newspaper, when you have the Christmas parade in Wayne County and Goldsboro and as well as in Mount Olive. We are member of the Chamber of Commerce of Wayne County in Mount Olive. If you notice that usually have 25 to 30 Corvettes. And you look at the dollar value of those, you're talking about over $1 million, $2 million. So you're talking about a small group can bring value of that together and to try to come with a common bond. What can we do within the county for the investors that we have instead we do it on our own? We need that $900,000, but we're still feeding the poor. We're also still trying to develop other things. So we're just saying, give us a chance in terms of showing what we can do in northern Wayne County. And I can assure you that you're going to see some results that's going to be amazing. So if you would just consider the opportunity for industrial park in northern Wayne County. And also, the department that we have in terms of trying to put people in jobs, give us opportunity in terms of doing that. Because all we're trying to do is invest in Wayne County and invest in Fremont. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Jones, I'm sorry. I appreciate everything that you brought to us. A lot of times, monies, you know, because we're doing so much, we tend to have oversight when it comes to money that we didn't receive yet. So I'm glad you brought that to our attention, and I'm sure we'll be following up to see what's going on with that $900,000. And I appreciate what the alumni does in Fremont. I've heard great things about them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can we find out what's happening with that?
Barbara, I can shed more light on it. It was not a county grant. It was applied for, but I don't mind following up on it to find out. I'd need more information on the exact type of CVBG grant it was. If it was a DR grant, as you know, that can take years, couple of years to get going. Do you know what type of grant it was, Ms. Barbara?
I do not remember. Do you remember, Mr. Jones?
I'm going to have to get with Tony Howell.
Yes.
I don't have the paperwork.
Then also must, you know, just add, of that grant, there was only 34 groups, towns, cities who received the grant. And Fremont was the smallest of all of them. And the next one in terms of size was Buleville. And of course, you know the size and the difference of what they had. The CBD grant is 20V355. And I have the documentation I can give that to.
If you can send me a copy of that.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
That would help.
Okay, will do.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Crumpler, we had to run it through Nor Wayne Alumni.
Right.
To get this grant.
Do you remember what it was specifically for?
Yes.
They have a whole list of different items that they were going to do with the grant.
Was there ever a grant administrator hired?
Yes.
It was me.
Okay, let me just dig into it.
Yeah. Did you contact anyone, Mr. Jones?
I did. I contacted, I talked with Mike this morning, Mike McAllister, his company was the one that was administrating the grant.
Okay, there's your administrator right there. Okay, so you talked to Mr. Howell?
Yes, we have, yes.
I'll follow up.
Okay.
Try to help you.
Yeah, this has been going on for about two years now.
It's two years, two years.
A lot of times with CVBG projects, they are, take some time to get going, there's so much red tape associated with them. So I'll follow up and see.
But here was the issue, they have many issues, but for whatever reason, I was being held up for this period of time. And within that grant, that includes food insecurity, we had utility payments that we have to count, and also individual rent supplement. There were several things that were inclusive of that, which included communication.
If you'll forward that so I can review it before I start poking around.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Item number three is a presentation on the biweekly payroll transition by Finance Director Allison Spain.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we wanted to present to you all sort of what we're putting out there for the employees to see in regards to the payroll transition. I know that sometimes, you know, someone will call you guys for questions if they're not sure who to call. And so we felt like it might be a good opportunity to give you some information or at least give you some guidance as to where you can point them if they have such questions. And also, this gives us an opportunity to get it out to more employees and anybody that's watching. So I appreciate you allowing us to do this. I do want to say, we've got the team that's doing the real work, Sarah and Tina from HR, and then Angie and Sandy from my office, and they are working hard to make this as smooth a transition as possible. And I really do appreciate all their work. And I'd say, yes, thank you, because we do have some software configurations that go along with this. So this is the presentation we've been giving to employees. We have it uploaded to our website, so this can be accessed at any time. And so just to give a little bit of background, we came to you all back, I think it was like late summer, early fall, and started talking about, you know, some things that we needed to do to really get our payroll to where it needs to be so that we can, you know, not keep running into these little, you know, issues audit-wise, you know, make sure we're in compliance with labor laws and all those things, because we have such a variety of pay in our county and in pay types in our county. And so we came to you and talked about possibly going to biweekly, and it was your suggestion that maybe we should survey our employees and see, you know, what the employees thought. So we did. And the survey came back overwhelmingly in favor of a biweekly payroll. So, you know, we would have been fine to stay monthly, it was less work. But really and truly, in the best interest of the county, this is the right way to go. And then for our employees, I think by the survey, a lot of them are in favor of that. And it's a very common way to pay folks. So we are implementing a biweekly pay schedule, changing from the 25th of the month, which is what we've been paid forever and ever, amen, to getting paid every other Friday. The transition period begins in March, and then the full transition will be in April. And we'll kind of go into that a little bit more. So why did we choose to do this? You've heard this already because we talked about it earlier last year. But for one, it's standardized pay practices across the county, and it allows us to have consistent income sheets across departments. It allows us to look at our policies and start cleaning those up and getting some things written down that need to be clarified, and just give us a cleaner way of paying our employees and make it more understandable to them. It also gives us more efficient and effective time reporting. Instead of turning pay and vacation and sick around once a month, it's going to be turned around much quicker than that. Employees are going to be able to know, and supervisors, how much time do I have? How much time do I have left? You know, that kind of thing, especially if they have an unexpected illness or an emergency that comes up. This will also reduce the manual adjustments that our payroll department is having to make after the fact, because right now, when we pay on the 25th of the month, we're paying for through the 31st, when that time has not actually been worked. And so if they don't work exactly those days, we have to go back and fix that. And so there is a lot of adjustments that have to be made. Sometimes there are payments that have to be made back to us. And so it is very messy from an audit standpoint. This would also help reduce overpayments, you know, in the case that I just talked about. Your vacation and sick leave balances will be more current instead of always being a month behind. And that's always been a point of confusion for people, especially, you know, people that are trying to go out on maternity leave or something like that, you know, they never feel like they really know what their current balance is. This is just a little brief chart that gives you a difference in what the pay cycles are going to look like. Our monthly pay cycle went from Sunday to Saturday, first to the last day of the month. When we switch over, it's still Sunday to Saturday, but it's going to be for a two-week period. And just a little point of clarification, this is not bi-monthly. Bi-monthly is two times a month. We are going to bi-weekly, which is every two weeks. So we have had that question a few times. You're going to go from 12 paychecks a year to roughly 26 paychecks a year. I say roughly because there is a nuance every 12th or 13th year that we're getting creative in how to budget for, where you actually have an additional pay period in a year. And it happens every 12 or 13 years. Paycheck date is going to go from the 25th of every month to every other Friday after the completion of two weeks. So you'll work two weeks, get paid the next Friday. How is this going to affect pay? I'm not sure what's going on here. It's not going It's not going to reduce what anyone earns, so everyone's going to earn the same thing they were earning before. It is being calculated on time worked versus advanced time. And so just like I talked about earlier, we had that one week where everybody's kind of getting paid upfront, we're going to have an adjustment period. And so that's what this next talks, these next couple of bullet points talk about, that there's going to be a one-time pay adjustment, and that's in March. That's why we talk about, that's why we say the transition starts in March where that one-time adjustment takes place. And so full-time employees are going to get their final full monthly check in February, covering the entire month of February. And then in March, as you see later, we'll show how that, how that adjustment, that transition's going to work. And so this is sort of an employee, it's an employee conversion pay schedule. It kind of gives you an idea for this year only, because this is the year of transition, what the pay dates are going to look like and what hours they represent. Now, when we get to talking about number of hours paid and base pay, it's important for me to clarify for any employees that are listening, this is based on your regular, like, eight to five employees, like finance, like H R. Now, you have EMS workers, sheriff's office, you know, people like that that earn overtime and things like that. So this is only regarding their base pay. And what we're doing, what the team is doing, is meeting with these departments that have these special cases, meeting with them individually to talk about the nuances that they have, because it would be overwhelming to try to put all of that information out online. So we wanted to put as much as we could generally, and then we're meeting with the departments to talk about the more specifics. But if you'll notice, January, February is the regular 174 that everybody's seen on their paycheck for 100 years. And then in March, you see that it says your pay period dates are from March 1st to 25th. And instead of 174 hours, you're getting paid for 144 hours. And that's where that one-time adjustment's happening. That's where we're changing from paying, because we've got to have a time where we true up that week of pay that they were advanced. And that's where that's happening. Then after that pay period, you'll have every two weeks. So it'll be 80 hours every two weeks, 80 hours every two weeks. And so their full deduct, one note, this is for employees mostly, but their full deductions will come out in March. And then after that, we'll start seeing those, those biweekly deductions change. And we'll go over that a little bit as well. I do want to talk about too, just in case anybody's listening, there is going to be a catch-up period for people in March for overtime earned and time taken in March. So some of those that have overtime, I think, will actually see a little bit of a bump in their March paycheck, because that is usually reported a month afterwards. So that's going to get caught up in March. Make sure I didn't go too far, okay. This is also affecting our part-time folks. So we are going to have full-time and part-time paid the same way. Right now, the way it works is part-time is paid one way, full-time's paid another. And it's very confusing for employees, it's confusing for us half the time. So, you know, it's a cleaner way to do it just across the board. So you'll see that they will also have a catch-up period in April is when theirs is going to catch up. And I went backwards. All right. And so the other thing that we want to show, this is sort of a, this is a basic example of a $30,000 full-time employee pay after the transition. And so if you look at the chart, it shows, you know, those first two pay periods were 174 hours. Then in March, when you have that adjustment, they were paid for 144 hours, it changed their pay. And then after that, it was 80 hours after that. And their pay was the same every two weeks after that, base pay only. Now, one thing that we're pointing out in this chart is that we will have one time this year where there's three pay periods in a month. That is typically going to have to happen twice a year. And you'll see that in 2024. And we'll talk about how that affects deductions. So in 2024, that $30,000 employee is actually going to have two times that year where they get paid two times, excuse me, three times in a month. And the reason that's important is that when we talk about benefits and deductions, that's going to affect how their deductions and benefits work. So I'll get to that in a second. I do also want to put out one thing, because in this chart, they've made, we made sure to point this out. So if you look at the bottom entry here, it's got the last pay is actually in 2024. And so this is a, this is where your timing comes in. It's not that they earned anything less, but because of the timing and the way the Friday falls, they're getting paid for that last amount on January the 5th. Now, next year in 2024, it would be paid on January 3rd. But they actually get paid the full $30,000 up on December 20th. So you see the timing, it kind of goes back and forth each year. And it's just, it's just the timing in the weeks, because it doesn't work out to be even every year. Okay? So like I said, there's 26 biweekly paydays in most year, but there will typically be two times a year where you have three in a month. So what will happen on those two times a year, one time a year for this year, is you, the employees will have a deduction holiday, is how we're going to refer to it. This deduction holiday means that they will have certain deductions that will not come out on that third, that third paycheck in the month. And so it only applies to certain deductions, and we'll get to how that works in a second. But this also means their net pay is going to be more on that third pay period in that month, because they're not going to have as many deductions taken out. So the way we're splitting this up is flat dollar deductions, hospitalization, dental, things like this are going to be taken out over 24 pay periods, okay? Percentage-based deductions, retirement taxes are going to be taken out every pay period. There is a small exception to our 401K and 457 flat amounts. This is a, this is a small exception that applies to just certain employees, but since, you know, some may be watching, I will say that employees that are having flat amounts come out for these retirement purposes do need to get in contact with payroll to talk about how that affects their deductions. Like I said, it's not a, it's not a large number of folks, but we do want to make sure we're addressing every, every possibility. So this is just a little chart that shows you a kind of a snapshot of what the deductions will look like. So under the first column, you've got the deductions withheld every paycheck. It's percentage-based, so regardless of whether they have three paychecks in a month or two. The next column over is your flat amount pay deductions, and those are only over 24 pay periods. And then again, we've got a couple of, a couple of, I don't want to call them disclaimers, they're not disclaimers, but points for people that may fall in a small category of folks in regards to having additional taxes taken out above just their regular percentage-based withholdings and then 401K, 457. And they can certainly reach out to us anytime about that. And we have some more information on the website about it as well. These are just some specific things that have come up as a result of speaking with employees as we've been getting feedback. They have been really good about trying to add this to the PowerPoints and to the information to our employees. So this just shows specific pays and how they will be paid out after biweekly. Regarding opt-out, it would be paid in June, the first pay period. Uniform allowance would be first pay period in July, and longevity would be the first pay period in November. The stipends would be split in half and paid in 24 pay periods. This is for things like your travel allowance, cell phone, sheriff detention stipends and things like that. Separation allowance is specifically for our sheriff's office. And for those folks that have retired and received separation allowance, they are getting letters that talk about what their pay is going to look like and how that, how things are going to change for them. So they have reached out to them. Regarding leave for vacation and sick, everyone's still going to earn the same amount of leave, but obviously because you're not doing it once a month, you're doing it roughly twice a month, every two weeks. That accrual is going to look a little different. For sick time, it's super easy, because your sick does not change regardless of how many years of service you have here. You get eight hours no matter what. So that's going to just go from days per month or days per year to hours per pay period that you're accruing. And you can see the old monthly rate was eight hours just straight. Now it's going to be broken up into a fraction of that. And then your vacation leave accrual, this is for full-time. You can see this is based on progression with years of service with the county. So you earn more vacation the longer you stay with the county. And so those, this looks a little more complicated because of that. And so we've got our old monthly accrual rates there and then new monthly accrual rates. We have regular part-timers that earn some time as well. And that only applies to our regular part-timers, and they would earn 75% of the rates. And so this kind of addresses all of those issues. The last full accrual will be in March, and then the first biweekly accrual would be in the April 14 paycheck. This is sort of a snapshot of what we've done to try to encourage employees to prepare. You know, we've been talking about this for a while. And so, you know, changing pay date frequency means changing cash flow. So, you know, we've urged employees to plan ahead, you know, consider saving your tax return, because tax filing season is, you know, is here. And so for those who normally get refunds, you know, they might want to consider just holding on to that until we get through the April transition. And then, you know, they can do whatever they like with it. We have encouraged them to start reviewing their monthly expenses. You know, if they have all their bills paid out one time a month at one date, then they need to probably consider spreading those out. And they need to, you know, be talking to their banks or, you know, a lot of times you can go online and change this stuff like really quickly. So going online and changing these pay dates for drafts and things like that. We are also encouraging them to review their withholding exemptions. The, the pay, the regular federal and state tax withholdings, if you're not withholding in addition, is going to adjust itself, because it's based on tables that are automatically updated. But again, in bold down there, for those who have additional amounts taken out, we are encouraging those folks to, to review that. And they are actually, I think, identifying those and contacting them in case they want to make those changes. We are not allowed to make those changes for them. So those are federal and state, you know, Department of Revenue forms, so we cannot complete those forms. It would be considered perjury. So we have to rely on the employees to do that. And so there are lots of pieces in this that we cannot do for employees, they have to do for themselves. And so that's why we've tried to push this information out, because we are limited in what we can actually do for them. For updates, and this is the best way I know to tell you, if you do get calls, to refer people, we have got a fantastic website up. I really want to thank Public Affairs, because they have just absolutely helped us get this pushed out. You know, we really wanted to make sure we could do this and where we could get it across, you know, to as many people as possible. And so Angie has been working a lot with Joel over there, and they have really kept the website updated. We have a microsite that is wangov.com/payroll, and they just are constantly updating that with information. It has an FAQ, so as we're getting questions from employees, if it's something that really would apply to, you know, to a lot of folks, that's getting added up on the website. There's also a portal on there where you can submit questions if you have those. It is confidential. I want to, I want to, you know, reiterate that, because the folks that it's going to already have access to payroll information, so it would not be going to anyone that doesn't already have that access. But we want to make sure people are comfortable, you know, submitting questions and things like that. And then again, additional information sessions are going to be held in January for our timekeepers. We call them timekeepers, those are the folks that have to compile all the paperwork and turn it in to us. That's changing a lot for them, because they've got to turn around a lot faster. And then we're also having meetings with departments like 911 EMS, Sheriff's Attention, to really meet with these employees and try to get questions answered. We did do a couple of town halls back in December for employees, and, you know, it wasn't intended as much as we would like for it to have been, but we are thankful for the employees that showed up. I think it was very beneficial for them. There were some departments that had issues with shift work, so that's why we ended up reaching out to those employees direct, or those departments directly, so that we could, you know, try to accommodate their schedules. I know Sarah's been touching base with department heads to see if there's any, you know, thing they need from us. So we have, I think, exhausted as many resources as we can to get this information out. The biggest thing is just that it's only employees to really, you know, understand, take ownership of this and know that we're here for questions and assistance, but we just can't do but so much to make everyone prepared for this. And so at this point, that's all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. And I appreciate you allowing me to do this, to get this out to as many folks as possible.
Does anybody have any questions?
I've got something. Can you go back to the $30,000?
Sure. Oh, let's see, right here.
Based on this right here, it shows that it's going to be the seventh paycheck before they catch up. So it's like, that would be, six paychecks would be basically three months. So this, and that would be $7,500 based on the $2,500 per month on a $30,000 full-time job. And they're getting paid $11,5385, so it's going to take the seventh paycheck before they get to, and I just done some quick figure, $8,076.95, so they're going to go three months behind. I just want the employees to understand that they're going to go, they're not going to get what they're used to getting.
Right.
To the tune of almost, I think it's $500, I mean, $230 a month less, I think is what it is.
Yeah, and that's a good point, because it's a good point to distinguish between, you know, timing versus what they're earning. They're not earning anything less, but the timing of that payout is different. And that's, that's a very good point. And that's part of what we're trying to encourage people to really ask questions, understand this schedule. We've got them posted out there so that people can see what this looks like, how it's going to play out. And so, yes, absolutely, I appreciate that.
So basically, for three months, you're going to be $600 behind.
Right. Depending on whether you fall with your salary, right.
Right, that's on a $30,000 deal. That's like, that's what we were talking about the other day, about doing something where they can actually put their stuff in, but you said that's too complicated for people.
We can do a base pay, and that would be super easy. I think Angie's working on getting one out there. We can do a base pay schedule where someone could plug in, let's say they make $25,000. They could plug that in and see how it populates with this schedule. The only thing we have to be real careful about is that we can't say for sure, you know, for EMS, 911 Sheriff's Office, they'll have overtime and things like that. So we never want to, you know, anybody think we're misleading them, but we could absolutely do it for base pay, and Angie is working on that at your request.
Well, the reason I bring that up is $600 a month can be a big issue for some people, or for any office for that matter. But the, you're switching payment options, the way you've got them set up is not the easiest to do. So that's, that's going to, I think this is going to be an issue for our employees, but that's, we need, whoever, they need to start looking at that, because that's going to be a problem. If you got it set to come out on the 7th, you just can't call and say, look, I want it to come out on the 20th. You know, and it just don't work that easy, so.
Let me spark the spark, following up on Commissioner's girly's point. Those folks that don't wage garnishments, they need to be physically aware of what's going on.
Right. And we've pushed this out, we're actually presenting again, we've talked about it at Department Managers Meeting, but we're going to present again, I think, in the February Department Managers Meeting. We have done emails, we've done, I think we've exhausted everything we can. So like I said, if you talk to anybody, please encourage them to come to the website and look at the information, because ultimately, you know, what we really would like to get to is for everyone to have a really good understanding of how they're paid. And I think that's one of the hardest things about the way we've been paid, is a lot of people don't understand the way we're paid, because it doesn't reflect actual time worked. It has a little bit of, it has a little bit of advanced time, a little bit of time work. It doesn't have your vacation and sick, it doesn't have your overtime, so it's sort of a hodgepodge. And so this, I think, will be more understandable. But as you said, there is a transition period, and this is the absolute best schedule. We've, we talked, we talked to, we conferred with our auditor, we conferred with our third-party vendors. We have talked to as many folks as we could, we've talked to people that have made this transition, our software provider, and this is absolutely the best-case scenario we could provide. But at the end of the day, it is an adjustment that has to be done. It's a Band-Aid that's got to be torn off. And sometimes there's no, there's only so, you know, easy you can make that. But I would like to give a little bit of kudos to Sarah, Angie, they, our software provider asked for, to borrow this. They, our software provider asked for, to borrow this presentation because they were so impressed with the information and the preparedness of it. That, that was absolutely not me. That was these folks over here, but they have really done a good job of preparing. I realize, and we realize, that everyone is still going to have questions and it's not going to be the easiest process. At the end of the day, you know, our employees voted for this and we are doing what's in the best interest of the county going forward and putting us in a good spot.
Did you figure out how many employees actually voted for the actual employee? How many employees out of, how many employees we got?
Oh, no, I thought you said you were going to speak with.
I didn't, I didn't know.
Oh, okay. Okay. We can get that information.
How many employees have we got?
We've got about, what, a thousand total? That includes full-time and part-time, so we can find out like how many responded.
I'm calling my, he's never coming back.
Okay.
So you're saying, how many, what, because you don't know how many people voted for it.
Yeah, it was, I do remember that it was roughly about 60%, a little, it was actually over 60% that voted for bi-weekly.
That, that voted, 60% that voted, but we don't know how many people voted. So what, 60% of a thousand people?
No.
Right, okay.
And, you know, again, that, you can't force that participation. We, we tried to make that available. We, we pushed it out to managers, we pushed it out to employees. If people don't choose to participate, we can't control that. You know, again, at some point, people have to take ownership. This is this, this is their pay. They have to take ownership of that.
First off, I want to thank you and the staff. Y'all did a great job. You were very thorough. Things that I didn't understand earlier, just going through the website, you just really explained.
Oh, right.
So I really appreciate that. It's going to be challenging in the beginning for people who have been, you know, getting monthly pay for, some people decades. But I think that, you know, on the long run, it's going to be beneficial to the staff and also to the employees, you know. It's kind of tough trying to balance your budget on a monthly basis opposed to bi-weekly. You know, you never know if an emergency comes up. Now you have that money there, bi-weekly opposed to monthly.
Right.
Thank you so much. Wonderful job.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Mr. President, you want to go to the, to the presentation here to move forward?
Yes, we'll move to our 10:00 AM opioid workshop with Nidhi Seshdeva.
Good morning.
I guess we can get right to it, yeah? Hello, everyone. We have quite an audience in that hallway.
I'm telling you, you brought a whole crowd with you.
I, it's always a good time, for sure. Yeah. Cool, well, good morning. Can you all hear me from this distance? I'm wearing heels today for the first time in a while, so I can squat if I have to. But good morning, I'm Nidhi Seshdeva, and I'm the Director of Strategic Health and Opioid Initiatives with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Very excited to be here with you all today. Thank you so much for having me. Essentially, I don't know how to click forward. How do I do that? Great, sorry about that, y'all. Every, every room is different, so. I am basically here to sort of give you an overview of the North Carolina Opioid Settlements. We, at the association, are building a team of technical assistance providers and essentially I'm on a speaking and listening and learning tour, traveling all over North Carolina to get a sense of sort of where people are with opioid settlements. I'm here to basically give basics and then have a very open discussion afterwards. So I have a lot in my head and I'm happy to have a conversation, however it makes sense to y'all. But I was just going to start with sort of the ground rules or sort of orientation of what the North Carolina Memorandum of Agreement requires, and then we can walk through the strategies as it feels good to you all. Yeah? So just real quick, part of why I like to start with this quick little data slide is just to give us an orientation. You know, we're not new to this epidemic. It's not the first time North Carolina's ever experienced an opioid epidemic, but it is certainly one of the most deadliest ones, right? And so we have nine people every single day dying in North Carolina from opioid overdose. We've had over 28,000 people die in the last 20 years, which is heartbreaking to me every time I say it out loud. And of course, we know that there's sort of ripple effects to that, and there's many, many more people that have actually experienced sort of the impact of the overdose epidemic when it comes to families, communities, and individual people. And so the National Opioid Settlements is basically shorthand for thousands of settlements, right? So like basically, a bunch of attorneys generals got together and said, you know, this isn't right, we need justice, we've got to figure out how to get ourselves out of this hole. And so there's, there's many settlements from, you know, individual counties, cities, all over the country, and they're basically lumped together as the national settlement, right? And so this is against manufacturers, drug distributors, pharmacies, and consultants. And together, we sort of have this big, large pot. And so the big three are the first, Purdue Pharma, Mallinckrodt, and Endo, and those have been completed, so that's sort of what the money we have now to work with. We've got some past settlements with Johnson &amp; Johnson, which is sort of a different category. And then there's some pending settlements as well. So you've probably heard in the news that there's more money coming. They're still trying to figure it out. North Carolina has decided that they want to sign into that settlement, but the actual dollar amounts are still sort of being negotiated. So I can get into that in a little bit. But basically, in summary, we have $750 million coming from the National Opioid Settlement from the first wave, and then an additional, we expect about $650 million coming into North Carolina through the second wave, which is from that, those pharmacies, CVS, Walgreens, Walmart. And so this means that there's going to be about $1.4 billion coming into North Carolina over a period of 18 years. So depending on who the defendant was, who the defendant was, they are sort of paying out on different schedules, right? So some are like, we're just going to pay it out in the first one or two, three years, done, cool. Some are like, well, we can't afford that, we're going to spread it out over time. And so the North Carolina Memorandum of Agreement is basically sort of what, what's a what in North Carolina? What does this mean for us? And so it was negotiated by the North Carolina Department of Justice, as well as the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners 555 Committee, which is five county commissioners, five county managers, and five county attorneys. And essentially, we figured out, you know, like, these are the rules, this is what we expect to do. We want to acknowledge that this is not a new epidemic to North Carolina. We have a lot of expertise in our communities. And each community is sort of an expert in their own needs, right? We're all experts in our own lives, communities know best what they need, so let's put the power and the decisions in the hands of our communities through you all to decide what makes the most sense. And so this North Carolina Memorandum of Agreement was sort of incorporated into the national settlements. It basically includes, or addresses the allocation of funds, which I'll get into, the use of the funds, and sort of transparency and accountability measures as well. So in North Carolina, unlike most states, 85% of the dollars from that $1.4 billion is coming into local governments. And so that includes all 100 counties in North Carolina, as well as our 14 largest municipalities, based on population and a fancy formula that they figured out sort of at the national level. And so this is really great, right? So most other states have a very different split. There's like 50-50 split, or majority going to the state, less going to the, to the local governments. And I think we're like among two, maybe, that the, like, almost 85, 90% of the money is going to local governments. And so the North Carolina payment schedule, which is on this dashboard, I'd love to point everybody to, is the ncopiodsettlement.org data dashboard on the payment schedule. Basically gives you a really great, quick snapshot on how much money is actually coming to your county. And so you can click on a little like dropdown box to be able to figure that out. And as new funds come in and new settlements get finished and completed, we'll be updating this dashboard so you can see sort of what that looks like over time. And so Wayne County will be getting over $6 million over 18 years. And as I mentioned in the beginning, some settlements are sort of coming quicker or sooner, and so the money is very much front-loaded. The idea is that we want to give people sort of a good startup money, you know, get things going, make sure that we're really taking time to go through planning, and then sustain programs over time. So in the North Carolina Memorandum of Agreement, there's a list of remediation strategies. And this is basically in line with the National Opioid Settlements. Since it is all about, you know, opioid overdose, the national settlements are very much focused on supporting programs and services that serve people with opioid use disorder and any co-occurring substance use disorder or mental health condition. So this basically means that someone who has opioid use disorder, whether present or in the past, is sort of eligible for programs and services and how can we best support them as a whole person, not denying the fact that we're all dealing with many challenges at the same time. So the MOA offers local governments two options, which I believe at this stage you're still deliberating. But there's basically option A, which is detailed in Exhibit A of the North Carolina Memorandum of Agreement. And this is basically a shorter list of strategies that are high-impact, evidence-based, sort of tried and true, we know this stuff works, go forth and do if you decided to go option A. And I can sort of briefly talk about what those are in a minute. But they basically span across treatment, harm reduction, prevention services, as well as supporting people in recovery. Option B is in Exhibit B. It is much, much longer of a list. And the idea is that you have to go through a collaborative strategic planning process. It's very sort of detailed in Exhibit C, before you sort of commit or justify any options or strategies in option B. The main difference, the way that I've been kind of thinking about it in my head, is that option A is sort of like strategies that are much closer to the people that are at risk, sort of like immediate, you know, let's keep people safe and alive and connected to care. And then option B strategies are a little bit further removed. So they're, you know, either further removed in the timeline, or further removed from the person that's at highest risk. Hopefully that makes sense. And so option A strategies are basically these 12. I tend to focus more on them because honestly, most counties across the state are doing option A. I think I could think of maybe two of them that are doing option B. But basically, it's sort of grouped into a few different categories. The top of the list is collaborative strategic planning. No matter if you choose option A or option B, we recommend that everybody does collaborative strategic planning. That's very much, you know, an intentional process of figuring out like, what's, what do we have? What are the gaps? What are the needs? What, you know, best fits our community culture? And, you know, let's build on what's already happening, right? So the opioid settlement is a meaningful amount of money, for sure, it's a lot, but it's not everything. And it's only one piece of the sort of funding puzzle, right? So counties are very much taking settlement dollars, combining them with, you know, local, state, and federal dollars, as well as donations from private foundations or grants, and trying to do sort of bigger picture things. And the MOA, to be honest, is very specific in some ways, but also a little bit squishy. And so there's a, you know, a chance for us to sort of talk through what those details mean, what's applicable or eligible under the MOA versus what might be better used or covered with other dollars, right? And so evidence-based treatment is very much sort of top of the list in that we know that gold standard care for people with opioid use disorder are medications for opioid use disorder. That includes buprenorphine, methadone, naltrexone. And the idea, of course, is to keep people alive, and so how can we do our best to give access to evidence-based treatment and medications in any opportunity that makes sense, whether it's through our federally qualified healthcare centers, our local health departments, our hospitals, our EDs, whatever makes sense. It's also very much acknowledging that drug use is sort of a symptom of much deeper societal ills, right? And so we know that poverty and inequities and lack of housing and that kind of, like, employment opportunities makes it really difficult for people to stay in recovery. And so how can we do our best to connect people to those services over time as well? And so there's room in the opioid settlement and the option A strategies to support recovery, housing, linkages, and employment. There's also an acknowledgement that trauma is the sort of gateway to drug use, and so we've got to really focus on children and adolescents who might already be struggling from opioid use disorder. And so how can we sort of create supportive communities around them? Most child interventions are actually kind of adult interventions, really, and so how can we support families and communities and sort of supportive community environments that they might be in? Naloxone post-overdose response and syringe service programs kind of follow into the harm reduction, sort of crisis response strategies. And naloxone, for folks who might not be familiar, is a drug medication that reverses specifically an opioid overdose. It's a first aid medication, it does nothing else but that. It's relatively cheap, it's been on our EMS drugs for years, you know, decades since the 50s. And it's basically what we need when people are in active overdose, right? And so first responders include, of course, our traditional first responders, but also very much our community members, people who use drugs, people who love them, and people who might be like right there. Because in the case of an overdose, buying time so we can get other care services there is really, really pivotal to sort of restore breathing and get oxygen back in the body. Post-overdose response is this idea that if someone has experienced a non-fatal overdose, we want to very much use those sort of like pivotal hours where you kind of got, you know, shaken up a little bit and said, gosh, I'm really glad you're still alive, how can we get you connected to care? And so working with EMS and other peer support and community outreach workers and whatnot to basically have that conversation within the first 24 to 72 hours of someone having an overdose, to sort of connect them to care during that pivotal, often very reflective time. Syringe service programs legalized in North Carolina in 2016 are one of our best ways to get to people who are often alienated and sort of kicked out of our sort of traditional healthcare systems. It's very much about relationships, building connections, waiting for someone to be ready, and then routing them to whatever they might need, whether it's treatment or housing support, food, you know, whatever, food, whatever's needed. But it's very much an evidence-based strategy that's been around for decades, reduces communicable disease, very much, you know, people are, I think, seven times more likely to connect with treatment if they've been connected to a syringe service program. It's also very cost-effective. I don't know about y'all, but a 10% syringe that's unused is much better investment to me than $100,000 of hepatitis C treatment over the course of someone's life. The last category, this sort of goldish color, is basically an acknowledgement that some communities and populations have been harder hit by the overdose epidemic than others. And so in North Carolina, we've done some research out of UNC that says that people who have been incarcerated are 40 times more likely to die within the first two weeks of being incarcerated and released than the general population. And so we really want to focus in on supporting them, not only sort of at different stages of the sort of involvement with the justice system, like whether it's pre-arrest aversion and sort of saying, we acknowledge that you're experiencing a health, a health challenge, rather than sort of a legal challenge. And so how can we use our resources the best way to get you to care and health services rather than routing you through the justice system, which can also be increasingly traumatic, right? Addiction treatment for incarcerated persons is also this acknowledgement that there's a combination between a population that's really high-risk and that there's this gold standard for opioid use disorder treatment. And so how can we do our best in our jails to try to connect people to care while we have them in our, under our watch? We also know that there's been guidance that has come out from the Department of Justice that says that if we do not continue care for someone who might be coming in with a methadone or a buprenorphine prescription while they're in our jails, then we might actually be in violation of the American Disabilities Act. And so there's sort of a bigger movement now to make sure that we've got that covered in our contracts with our medical providers in our jails. And then re-entry programs are basically this idea that it's really hard to leave in jails and we don't quite set us, set them up for success. And so how can we do our best to have these warm handoffs and connect people to, you know, a medical home, or an opportunity for a job, or a stable place, a stable and safe place to live? And so just again, acknowledging that transition period can be really dangerous for people as they're leaving incarceration. That was a real quick summary of the strategies, I know. And again, I've been doing this work in North Carolina for like 20 years, so I've got a lot in my head and can happily explore any of these options with you all. But just a sort of quick, sort of what do you need to do, what's required, in that sort of context of what the national settlement is and what's required of the North Carolina MOA, we've got just some sort of basics. Every community and local government is supposed to set up a special revenue fund, which I'm very certain you all have already done. Each community in North Carolina has already gotten at least two or three payments from the national settlement. And so that's basically a protected pot of money that says it's only for opioid settlement dollars, it cannot be mixed with any other funding, and, you know, it's subject to audit each year. And also, this is a very important point for you all, but you have to authorize spending ahead of time. And so before you spend any opioid settlement money, the Board of County Commissioners, you lovely folks, will have to actually say, we want to spend this money on this strategy with this amount of dollars for this amount of time. And so be very specific about that. Also, understand your options and related requirements. It's very much what I'm here to do today, and can very much, of course, offer services even beyond today. Very accustomed to having multiple conversations, coming out to visit, meeting with community folks, whatever you need, the association is very much here to help you with that. And then reporting annual spending and impact. And so transparency and accountability is very much built into our NC MOA, and I'll go through some of the reporting requirements in a minute. But all reporting is available to the public through our core NC website, which is basically our like resource engine behind the opioid settlement. There's also a requirement in the NC MOA to meet with municipalities within your jurisdiction each year. This meeting is required to be open to the public. It doesn't quite matter when in the year you do it. It doesn't quite matter when in the year you do it. Some counties are doing it at the beginning as they're like entering into their planning. Some are doing it later in the year as they've kind of got into their plans and they want to report progress or, you know, sort of fine tune some of the planning. So it's really kind of up to what makes sense for y'all.
Can I interrupt you and ask you a question on this?
Sure.
So it says meet with municipalities each year. Should we set up a meeting with all the municipalities once a year?
Yeah, there's a lot of different ways to do it. You could do either a special meeting with your municipalities that's open to the public. A lot of counties actually have coalitions that have been around for quite a while and they have representation from the municipalities on that group. And so that's a really easy, sort of makes sense, common sense way to do it. It really, it could be all of the above, honestly, as long as they've been invited. There's no guarantee they'll show up, but they're, you know, very much invited to give input into what those dollars are going to be used for.
One other question. Is this with municipalities that receive money or just?
Yeah, all of them in your jurisdiction should be invited. And so, you know, we've got 100 counties, obviously, and there's originally 17 municipalities in North Carolina based on population overdose numbers and whatnot that were getting funds also. So like, for example, Raleigh and Wake County, or the city of Raleigh and county of Wake were getting dollars. But there's been three counties who have actually, or three cities, excuse me, who've actually said, you know what, like, most of these services kind of fit within the county jurisdiction. It makes sense for us to actually give our dollars to our county and then let the county sort of manage the process, although we still want to be involved in like the decisions about how the dollars are going to be spent and can very much support in the implementation of the programs. But the reporting requirements and the sort of mechanics of the MOA will fall on the county, which honestly, if you look at the MOA strategies, it kind of makes sense. You know, you all have jurisdiction over a lot of the Health and Human Services and EMS and the jails and stuff like that.
So are you aware of any municipalities in Wayne County that actually received some of these dollars?
I don't believe so. These are the big ones, like the Charlottes and the, you know, Rawlins.
Yeah, we don't have a Charlotte.
Yeah, so I don't think so, but I can certainly, you know, refresh my memory on the list.
Thank you.
Yeah. So the spending authorization was that bit that I was telling you about where you have to authorize spending before it happens. And so we've also provided a template on the NCACC website, which I think is really helpful, and so I'm sure your county managers looked at it. But basically, it has to include these parts in order to be in compliance with the MOA. And most counties are kind of at this stage where they're going through the collaborative strategic planning process, figuring out what makes sense for them, and then allotting dollars to it. And so also just want to be clear that you do not have to spend all of the funds in the year that you receive them. There isn't like with ARPA dollars where there's like, you know, a timeline where you have to sort of allocate or, you know, commit dollars to a certain thing by a certain time. You've got 18 years to spend it. You can, you know, get interest on the funds, that's fine. You can break it up into parts. So some people are like putting, you know, a certain number of dollars towards the collaborative strategic planning process and then saying, cool, depending on what the results of that is, we will then allocate dollars towards a particular strategy that makes sense. There's a lot of different ways to do that. As long as before you spend any of money, you go through the spending authorization process. So whether it's through an ordinance or a special budget amendment or whatever you do, just as long as you declare ahead of time what you're spending them, you know, that this is something that's going to be using opioid settlement dollars specifically, that you're going to be doing this specific strategy, you know, Option A, number three or whatever you decide on. And then the amount of money, you know, we're going to put $50,000 towards this for this project period time, starting this date, ending this date, and then you can go forth and do, right? And so that's basically sort of upfront. And then the reporting requirements. The annual status survey is really just a kind of an orientation to who's who and what's what in each county, because we just would like to know who's the best contact and how we can sort of best support. So that's not technically required, but it's very, very helpful. So two through five are required through the North Carolina MOA. The local spending authorization report is, once you've passed that ordinance or sort of allocation of dollars towards a particular strategy, within 90 days, you have to submit a local spending authorization report to Core NC, which is the portal where all the data goes, that says, you know, a look forward, this is what we intend to spend the dollars on, this is what our plan is, this is, you know, for what period of time. So that's sort of a look forward. The annual financial report is a look back to say, okay, at the end of the year, 90 days after the end of the fiscal year, you're required to submit an annual financial report that says, well, this is what we spent money on or how much actually went towards what. And that's just sort of a, sort of again, transparency and accountability bit. All counties in North Carolina have very successfully completed their first round of annual financial reports, so kudos to everybody for that. The annual impact report is basically, you know, what did we do with the dollars? How much of it did we do? And is anyone better off at the end of the day, which is the whole point, right? You know, you all are very committed to bettering your communities, and so we want to be able to show that. We've spent money on these strategies and this is what came of it. And the annual impact reports, since we're in the first year of the settlement statewide, is a little bit messy, to be honest. And so we're figuring out what those metrics and measures will be, but the association is very much trying to sort of create a menu of metrics to say, if you're going to do this kind of strategy, this is a really great metric for you to consider, although you could very much, you know, ask your own questions to say, how do we make sure we keep our community and sort of our implementation accountable? The Option B report and recommendations is only if you decide to go the Option B route. So if you decide to go Option B, which again are those sort of further away strategies from the people that are at highest risk, and you've gone through your collaborative strategic planning process that's very step-by-step detailed out in Exhibit C, then you say, well, what came out of that collaborative strategic planning process? Who was involved? And what recommendations was then brought to the board to consider? And then what sort of came out of that decision-making process with you all? So that's, so Option B report is only if you decide to go Option B route. And I also want to point you to the Department of Justice MOA Resource Center. This is a fantastic resource for like copies of the MOA, the frequently asked questions list, and this reporting requirements memo, which details out what each of those reporting requirements are. And, you know, of course, happy to help answer questions as they sort of come up for you. But these are sort of the resources to start. There's a lot more out there. But if nothing else, everybody in this room, please check out the great resource that is ncopiodsettlement.org. This is basically your portal to all things NC opioid settlements. I'm very proud that North Carolina was one of the first states in the country to sort of get this up and going, again, for that full transparency sake as well. It's a great educational tool. And so it has so much on there. It's got copies of the MOA, links to the frequently asked questions. It's got strategy-specific resources. If you're really curious about one particular strategy in Option A, like you can look at webinars and resources and readings and sample templates and all sorts of really good stuff. And then this other website, this NC MOA Resource Center with the Department of Justice, has those frequently asked questions, which are so key because they both sort of add a little bit clarity when things feel a little extra squishy or just sort of add a little extra, which is really useful. And I think they're trying to update it like every few months or so. And so your questions to us are really helpful because once we hear where you all might be getting stuck, then we can update and inform DOJ, you know, we might want to explain this a little bit. The payment schedule, like I talked about at the beginning of the presentation, will be updated as more settlements kind of get finalized and completed. But this will tell you again how many dollars are coming to your specific county on what timeline. The Data by County is also a really great resource. The North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services has the Opioid and Substance Use Action Plan Data Dashboard. Lots of words, but basically, it's all things opioid death and overdose and drivers of health and social determinants of health and sort of related impacts of what the overdose epidemic is sort of looking like in North Carolina. And you can drill down again by like your specific county and figure out what those numbers are. And also just want to point out that like the Data by County is a little bit delayed though, right? Because the data's got to come up from the local level up to the state. So your health department locally is also a fantastic resource for you to get a sense of what the local challenges are. And then, of course, technical assistance and training. We're, of course, available and excited and eager and enthusiastic at the association to help you all. You know, we very much, we're a huge part of negotiating the actual NC MOA, so we sort of take pride in that process of getting you to the start line, but we're not just going to lead you there. We want to help you get to the finish line. So please reach out if you have any questions. And I've been doing this work for, again, a long time, and it's very much my passion. So happy to have whatever conversations are needed. We're also holding monthly virtual office hours for county commissioners, managers, staff, who might just need to pop in and ask a question on the second Tuesdays of the month from 10 to 11. But of course, you can always email or whatever's needed. So happy to open it up to questions to you all. And then wanted to also just put my contact information up for you all to stay in touch. But opioidsettlement@ncacc.org gets to our whole team. And then I've also included my direct email.
Chair, got a question. Can you go back to the slide, this high-impact abatement? Number nine, can you expand, explain that? Is that, are you expanding that service or until just kind of tell everybody exactly what it is?
Sure. So syringe service programs are, like I said, were legalized in North Carolina in 2016. The idea is that any governmental or non-governmental organization who promotes evidence-based strategies to reduce overdose or communicable disease can start a syringe service program. We, you know, over the course of however many years it's been, 2016, we've gotten like 40 syringe service programs now that cover this about 85% of the state. So they serve different people in different counties, even though they might be like based in 40 programs, they serve people from out of county. And it's very much an evidence-based strategy. I mean, it's been around for decades. It kind of grew out of the HIV epidemic, this idea that, you know, we didn't quite really understand what it was back then, HIV. And so we knew that not sharing needles or sharing drugs or having safer sex practices reduced the likelihood that someone would contract HIV. And so that very much applies with drug overdose too, in that people who have been sort of alienated or sort of left out of our traditional healthcare systems oftentimes don't have a place to go. And so syringe service programs are very much based on relationships, getting to the people who are often hardest to reach and connecting them to services. And so under the North Carolina law, they're required to offer quite a few number of services. If I can click ahead, if you close your eyes for a second, I'll make you dizzy. But I have a whole bunch of slides sort of at the end where, close your eyes if you get dizzy. So yeah, legalized in 2016. Like I mentioned, they're five to seven times more likely to connect to treatment if they've been visiting a syringe service program, very cost-effective, like I said. And so these are the core services that, under the North Carolina law, that syringe service programs are required to offer. That includes educational materials, syringe, access to unused syringes, secure disposal of syringes, although, you know, in North Carolina, it's also very legal to put used syringes in like a hard plastic container and throw it in our trash. This applies to, you know, people who have diabetes or are going through IVF or whatever else they might be doing with other medications. There's also naloxone kits and referrals, so that overdose sort of first aid, and also very much referrals to mental health and substance use treatment. So those are the core services that all SSPs in North Carolina offer. But honestly, since some of them have been around for a little while, like they're doing way more than that. So they're providing, you know, legal services, they're providing wound care, sort of primary care, working with hospitals, FQHCs, and health departments. They're doing actually hepatitis C treatment and curing people of hepatitis C through syringe service programs, which is quite fantastic. And then they offer some basic, you know, services like food, banks, and they'll often have like workplace, like work training or help them fill out applications for health insurance or whatever they might need. But they're doing, they're doing a lot.
So you, did I hear you say that there was a North Carolina law requiring us to provide those services?
No, no. There's a North Carolina law that legalized syringe service programs, so any governmental or non-governmental organization can start a program. So the syringe service programs in North Carolina basically are sort of held to the state law, if that makes sense.
So you said there was 40 in the state?
Yeah.
And is that, is that a county decision or is that a state decision?
It's a program's decision.
Program being?
Whoever wants to start a syringe service program. So there are, yeah, as of June last year, so they're required to do annual reporting every year, which usually happens in the summer. And so as of June of last year, there were a total of 48 registered syringe service programs directly serving 63 counties and one federally recognized tribe, although, like I mentioned, residents from additional 22 counties come to those 48 programs and also get services. So technically, they're covering about 85% of the state through syringe service programs. And these look different in different places depending on what's best, what's most needed, right? There's fixed site, which is basically a physical location where syringe service programs are offered. Those are housed in health departments, they're housed in FQHCs, they're housed within churches, they're housed within nonprofits. There's also mobile clinics, mobile services. So some communities that are really, you know, kind of spread out, it makes more sense for them to offer mobile services. So they're working in partnership with like fire departments and EMS, as well as have mobile sort of delivery and exchange with people out in the community. So that's also one way that it looks like.
So what you're saying is, if we have a program, if we have a program and actual people are actually coming here, they don't have one in their counties, they're out?
That's, could be possible, yeah. But the hope is that there'll be enough services in every home county that people don't have to go that far to get them, whether it's syringe service programs or access to treatment or, you know, recovery support or whatever it might be.
There's 40 programs, okay. I'm just, I'm just looking at counties in the state. There's not more than 40 in the state.
Forty-eight in the state, yeah.
Forty-eight, well, that's half the counties, basically, if you just, if you don't have two for...
Yeah, so far.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
My question is to you, we have all these opioid dollars and there's going to be a lot of individuals, nonprofits, coming in and expecting us to give them these dollars. What are the criteria we should look for in order to fund some of these nonprofits?
Excellent question. When there's dollars at the table, folks come, right? And so there's been a lot of discussions about sort of how to, how to manage that process. And so what counties are choosing to do are either, you know, maybe portioning out the funds that makes sense for us to do in-house sort of county-based programs, right? So like a jail-based program or EMS-based program or whatever, if that makes sense. And then sort of setting aside or allotting some of the dollars towards community-based organizations or, you know, other service providers. And so most are now entering into an RFP or RFA process. You know, we've got a couple that have taken the approach very differently. Like one county basically decided, you know, through their collaborative strategic planning process, that they were going to narrow down that list of 12 to maybe a handful. And they said, okay, these are the handful that we've sort of decided are much needed. Now, please submit proposals for those handful of strategies. They started there. And then another county has said, well, we, you know, are very interested in hearing what our community needs or wants. And so we opened up the whole list of strategies for Option A and said, pick one of 11. So the collaborative strategic planning was sort of set to the side, but 11, say, you tell us what we think is most needed based on the fact that you all have been doing this work for a long time. And, you know, we're looking for input that way. So, so they've also done an RFP process, starting with the whole list. But then it sort of turns into pretty typical, you know, RFP, select your strongest applicants with a very sort of, and I'm happy to help you with all this stuff, really. But like, you know, you'd want to have a clear and transparent kind of, this is what our expectations are, this is how we will grade them and select them and, you know, communicate that. And I mean, at top of the list is that any provider who does come to the county for dollars or with a request, like you have to make sure that it fits in the North Carolina MOA. Because at the end of the day, you all are, you know, the county is very much responsible for making sure that we are in compliance with the MOA. And so every dollar, even if it's a sub-recipient or subcontractor, also has to make sure they fit with the NC MOA. And so that's a really easy filter to be like, well, this doesn't quite fit our priorities, our strategies, or the legal requirements of the MOA. And so you can kind of filter through it that way. And, you know, it doesn't make sense. That's...
Yeah, because it's, I mean, there's nothing wrong with like new nonprofits. However, you want someone that really is going to maximize the dollar and is going to do something in the community. So those are, it's good that you allow me to know that that needs to be in, you know, in the contract.
For sure. And also a helpful tip in the contracts are to build in milestones for reporting, right? So even if you end up doing a contract with a provider for more than one year, more than one fiscal year, it's really good because you, because the county is required to report each year, right? With the impact reports and the financial reports and things like that. So building that into your contracts to say, we are responsible to the state to report this, we need information from our subs, will you please make sure you also help us stay in compliance by giving us the information needed so we can then share up, you know, kind of what's been done? So having some accountability benchmarks built in will be really, really important. And to give yourself an out, to be honest, like if it's not working, maybe we shouldn't continue. You're very familiar with this concept, like we'll have to revisit. And needs change over time. This is, this is a very unusual sort of setup, right? Like, we're so used to grants that last us one, three, maximum of five years, we get really excited, right? But this is 18 years. And, you know, it wasn't just yesterday we got into this mess, and so it's not going to, it's going to take us a lot longer to get out of it. And I don't know about y'all, but the last 18 years of my life have flown by. So the next 18 years are likely to do the same. And so we've got to make sure that we sort of check in as the epidemic changes, you know, like five years ago, fentanyl was not in everything, and it was a different beast. And so our response and our strategies had to be different. And so we need to adjust as necessary. And I just, and I want to put in a plug, again, your health departments have really been paying attention to this topic for a long time. And so they'll also be able to kind of give you a sense of the trends. And would love to give a plug for just engaging people with the experience, right? Like there's oftentimes where people who are living it will be able to tell us before our data tells us what's happening or what's coming. And so really listening to them as we shape our programs, you know, hold ourselves accountable in sort of as a state for these dollars, how can we do our best to listen to people who are experiencing what the epidemic looks like now and what it, what they anticipate it'll look like tomorrow?
Thank you.
Thanks for the question.
Madam Chair. Is it permissible for the county through its, say, its health department or DSS department to actually use some of these dollars?
For sure, yeah, yeah. As long as the program and service that they're offering fits within the North Carolina MOA, it matters less where it's housed. Does that make sense? So like.
So they would have to develop a program and the parameters and so forth?
Yeah, or grow and sort of shore up existing programs, right? So some of these services are not new, again, like is evidence-based, been around for a long time. The idea is to do them, do them well, do them for all the people that need it at high quality. So like even if it means incorporating a piece of a program that's MOA-specific into an existing program and you, and sort of capitalizing on that infrastructure and that success, you'll probably be better off. And so I'm very much encouraging counties to sort of take stock with what you've got and then figure out where those gaps are and also see who in those programs are we already reaching or who might be we missing and give that an opportunity for us to sort of expand out rather than starting something entirely brand-new, which is might not necessarily be required.
Well, I saw in your chart there incarcerated individuals. So if our detention center, as an example, came up with a program, then that, that's permissible use?
Yeah, it would depend on what the specific program is.
Sure.
You know, the, the most obvious examples are to start a medication for opioid use disorder or to continue medications for opioid use disorder as people come into our jails and they're sort of, again, under our watch. That's, I think, basic, and I would honestly strongly recommend that you all look into this, partly because of the guidance we've got from DOJ around being in violation of the American Disabilities Act, like we don't want to go there. And so there's also that re-entry programming that's really important, and that can look like lots of different things, you know, referring people to set up a, you know, if they have other health conditions, like making sure they have a medical home ready for them and an appointment with the doc when they leave, like that's really helpful. Or making sure people have a safe place to stay or, you know, someone to pick them up. You know, even these like basic things can be really helpful during that critical window when people are leaving incarceration. So honestly, it depends on the program, but a lot can fit. And there are some things that don't quite match, but I'm happy to like talk you through, we've got this idea, we've got this provider, or, you know, this is what we think it could look like. And I'll be like, cool, well, that, you know, makes sense, this fits, this part might not make sense, you know, how can we kind of piece apart, just to make sure that the dollars are nice and clean. Because like I said, it's a meaningful amount of money, but it's not everything. So we might have to kind of braid it with other stuff.
Madam Chair, great question. Can the dollars be used for mental health treatment for non-opiate users?
Non-opiate users, so yes and no, right? So the intention of the national settlements was all opioid-related. So in order for North Carolina to be in line with the national opioid settlements, yes, the person has to have some experience with opioids, whether opioid use disorder as a diagnosis, or someone who's used in the past, or a pain patient, or somebody who has experience or exposure to opioids. But again, we want to acknowledge that people aren't always dealing with one thing, and most opioid users are not only opioid users, right? Because this is sort of a poly-substance epidemic, actually. Most people are dying of multiple drugs in their system, even though they might not know it, because it's infiltrated and sort of poisoned everything. And so we want to make sure that we acknowledge that someone might be coming in and also dealing with other drug use issues or mental health and substance use kind of go very much hand-in-hand. We don't necessarily know which one starts what, right? And so how can we do our best to support mental health of people who also have experience with opioids? And so in the, the sort of first line in the option A strategy list, exhibit A, it says, people with opioid use disorder or co-occurring substance use disorders of other kinds and mental health conditions. So that opioid use disorder comes first, and then we acknowledge that that person might be experiencing other things below that.
Thank you.
But that is also a helpful filter, Commissioner Williams, when you're trying to decide like which program makes sense, is that, you know, are the majority of people served through that provider people with opioid use disorder? Not always knowing who's going to show up at your door and saying, we're not going to necessarily turn someone away, but we want to make sure that we're using the dollars in a, you know, in a compliance, compliant way with the MOA. And I'm happy to work with you all and your staff, like as you're figuring out the details of any of your programs.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Can you make sure that we get a copy of your presentation?
Oh, sure, yeah, it's already been sent over. Happy to share it. So the first 20 or so slides were sort of what I talked about out loud, and then I have some just reference slides at the end, which goes into more detail for each of the option A strategies on that list.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, this is a work session, and there might be someone in the audience that may have some questions, and I would ask that maybe you would ask that.
Yes, sir.
Just curious as to how broad are the range of opioids, opioid, or excuse me, opioids, I was going to say. Testosterone and so forth, and yet there's a pretty long list of drugs that, you know, I've never even heard about, about 10, 20, 30 years ago. Are y'all helping with treatment for folks who might be addicted to hallucinogenics and everything from mushrooms to barbiturates to cocaine and other stimulants and so forth? Is that, is it a pretty, pretty broad range?
So the question, repeat the question.
You could repeat this question because the audience watching would not be able to.
Yeah, sure. So tell me, check me if I'm not understanding this right. So the question was, with opioid settlement dollars, are we also able to treat and care for people who might be using other drugs? So hallucinogens and, you know, stimulants and other drugs. That, yes and no. So that sort of speaks to the other question of the intention for the national opioid settlements was very much to focus on opioids, because those are the people that are the defendants, right? The manufacturers of opioids, the distributors of opioids, the pharmacies that dispense the opioids. And so we, we don't want to stray too far away from that, because we don't want to risk or violate any of those terms to mean that we might not get future money, right? And so, but again, there's an acknowledgement that yes, most people who use opioids also use other drugs, whether knowingly or unknowingly, because everything's a mess, right, out there. And so if someone were to come into a treatment facility or a recovery program and say, I've had experience with opioids, but I've also challenged by whatever else, mental health condition or other substance use disorder, there is room to care for those people as well. But we want to very much just, it's, it's a little bit, you know, we acknowledge that people's experience also changes over time. And so how can we stay true to what the intention of the national opioid settlement is and all the legal requirements of that, and also be humane and compassionate for people who might be struggling with multiple challenges? Does that help?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And my second question, if I may, and second, if I could, is, have you looked at a lot of studies to see if states who are legalizing recreational use of marijuana, if there's a strong correlation with opioid use also?
That's a big question. Yeah, that I'm not fully prepared to answer completely in this space. Having paid attention a little bit to some other states, there's opportunities where marijuana for chronic pain patients or for people where other medical treatments might not help, medic, you know, marijuana could help. But I don't think it's been legalized long enough in any one place for me to be able to say that it's like, you know, the thing to do.
Do you mind announcing your name to the Madam Chair of your.
Certainly. Ms. Carlin K. Blackbrennan, it's L.A. N.B.G.R.M.
And if anybody else has any questions, do you mind stepping up to the mic? Does anybody else have any questions in the audience?
Please announce your name.
Hello, my name is Audra Haddad, and my question is, have you, are there any counties that are collaborating together? And if so, what has been their experience or any examples that you could share with us of how they do collaborate together with the funding?
Yeah, great. So great question, yeah. So that is also an option, is that counties can work regionally or together across county lines to do bigger projects. This is happening more so in the West, just because Dogwood Health Trust has, even before the settlement dollars showed up, they were investing in collaborative strategic planning and regional planning. And so I'm seeing that more in the West, but it's also popping up in some parts of the East where, you know, we have a district health department, for example, it just makes sense to do it that way. But it's, it's still a little early, like regional planning takes a while. And we, and we very much want people to take the time it takes to do a thoughtful, engaged, collaborative strategic process with people who have that experience very much involved. And so what's coming out of that are, you know, an understanding that they have shared priorities, or that a particular region might be hit by something, or that they're all experiencing a particular gap, you know, like there aren't treatment services within 100-mile radius of most of us or something like that. But counties are kind of in a, in a spot where they're wanting to sort of do the planning process and then say, okay, well, this is where we do align and overlap, and this is where we might not, right? So we can use dollars to do joint projects, if that makes sense, for maybe longer-term things, or we're going to start here and stay in home county first, and then expand out later, if that makes sense. And so it's, it's still very early on, right? It's only the first seven months, really, since the money has even shown up. And the guidance around what the MOA means and looks like has come. And so I think one of the things that I'm asking for everybody is just grace as we all figure this out, like it's big, and it's an amazing opportunity, and there's a lot of different ways we could take this. And so let's really be thoughtful, especially in the first year, to figure out what's needed so we can take a breath, everybody, you know? I know there's an eagerness and people are dying every day, and again, I've been doing this work for a long time and I feel that all the time, but I don't want to sort of miss the opportunity to do something meaningful and thoughtful, right? I think you all would agree with that.
Madam Chair, I have one other question that I want to. I know a lot of states are currently having the life-saving pens available. How do you feel about that being like, you know, easily accessible in communities?
Life-saving pens?
The next, I can't pronounce it.
Oh, naloxone, yeah, or Narcan, the brand name, yeah.
Yes.
It matters less what my personal opinion is, to be honest, but it feels really common sense. Like naloxone is the, the medication that reverses an opioid overdose, does nothing else, right? And if we've got people, nine people in North Carolina dying every single day, I want to make sure we have the tools in the hands of people who are most likely to respond, who are people who use drugs, people who love them, and our first responders, to get help to someone as quickly as possible. And so the thing about opioids, right, is that it, it suppresses our breathing. And so we need to be able to restore oxygen to our brains as fast as we can. And if naloxone is the thing to do that, then we need to get it everywhere. I mean, we have AEDs in all of our buildings, but we don't have naloxone. We're probably more likely to come across someone who's having an overdose than we are having, someone having a heart attack. And so to me, it feels really basic. And there has been some research that's come out of UNC that says that communities that flood, sort of flood their jurisdictions or whatever with naloxone, have a very clear reduction in overdose numbers. And that, to me, feels worth it.
Yeah, I think a lot of people kind of have a fear that it, it makes the community seem like there is a serious problem, well, you know, I mean, I don't think that, you know, I just, you know, if it's going to help the community, that's, you know, I would love to have it accessible.
Yeah, absolutely. Everywhere that it's needed. And so again, if people get dizzy, close your eyes. But, yeah, just in case people aren't, are less familiar with what naloxone is, it comes in many different formulations, it's first aid medication, and the idea is, you know, how can we get it everywhere where people might be? So that includes, you know, certain service programs within our jails, through our health departments, within hospitals, especially EDs or emergency departments, other community gathering spaces, and make sure your pharmacies actually stock the medication. So, because in North Carolina, we have a statewide standing order, so the state health director has signed a standing order that says that anyone who's in a position to assist someone in case of an overdose can go to any pharmacy in North Carolina and get naloxone medication without first visiting a doctor, because she sort of signed off on that and said, this is too important and we need to have it everywhere. And so just as an FYI for folks, there's also a really great website called naloxonesaves.org in North Carolina, where you can find places to get naloxone, and your health department is a great resource for that as well.
Any more questions?
Well, this is fun for me, so thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
It is such a pleasure to be with you all today, and I very much look forward to continue conversations.
And how do we pronounce your name again?
Yeah, thanks for asking. It mean, it's pronounced Nidhi or Niddy, Pretty Niddy.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Moving back to the consent agenda, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
We got the appointments.
We don't have the appointment committee.
Ah, appointment committee, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we do have appointments for this meeting. These will be coming to you as a motion.
Okay.
For the Wayne County Planning Board, motion to reappoint Craig Faunt, Curtis Safford, Randy Gray, Charlie Ward. Those come to you as a motion.
I have a motion on the floor for an appointment committee. All those approve.
We need to have a discussion.
All right, do we have any discussion on?
Were those all reappointments?
All reappointments.
Yes, thank you.
Do you need me?
Madam Chair, this is for the Council for Older Adults, and a motion to appoint Cindy Pendergrad to the commission.
All right, do we have any discussion on Ms. Pendergrad? No discussion? Raise your right hand, please.
Madam Chair, that is the appointments.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor to appoint, to approve the consent agenda. All those approve, raise your right hand, please. All right, motion carried.
Okay. Item number one on our new business is the motion to approve the purchase of two hangars at the Wayne County Executive Jetport and appropriate budget amendment. We have a memo here from the jetport. The jet received an offer to sell from the current owners of two hangars located at the jetport. These hangars are privately owned by Mr. B. Dean, who is now deceased. The hangar structures are privately owned and are currently under, under ground lease with Wayne County. The owners have expressed their intent to sell these hangars, staying consistent with the future vision of the jetport. The Jetport Commission has given unanimous consent to pursue the acquisition of these properties. This acquisition will improve our ability to serve our citizens with more desired aircraft storage, of which we currently are full and have a waiting list. It will enable us to increase our rent revenue. The purchase price is $30,000, all-inclusive of both properties. On behalf of the Jetport Commission, I'm requesting your approval for Wayne County to purchase these two hangars, and that is from Mr. Brandon Gray, the executive director of the jetport. In your agenda package, there's a map showing the location of those two hangars. So we'd be looking for some approval of that.
Do we have any discussion on that?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the purchase of the two hangars at the Wayne County Executive Jetport and the appropriate budget amendment.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the purchase of two hangars at the Wayne County Executive Jetport with an appropriated budget amendment. All those approve, raise your right hand. Motion carried.
Okay. Item number two is a motion to adopt resolution 2023-2, resolution for the authorization of installment financing agreement between Wayne County and Truist Bank. This is a resolution authorizing the exclusion and delivery of an installment financing agreement, a deed of trust, a project fund agreement, a wire transfer agreement, and related documents in connection with the financing of a new jail facility for the county of Wayne, North Carolina. We are looking for some approval of this.
Okay. Have a resolution for authorization of the installment financing agreement between Wayne County and trustee bank.
Make the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. All those approve, please raise your right hand. All those disapprove, motion carried.
And the motion is by Mr. Commissioner Collins.
Okay, moving on to item number three, it's submitted by RSM Harrison Associates. It's Wayne County HMGP 4285-057R acquisition, award of bid proposals for demolition and clearance of properties purchased within our hazard mitigation grant program. Wayne County Courthouse, we opened bids and received proposals for asbestos removal, demolition, clearance of the properties. These three projects are Rick Bostic Construction and Demolition in Kinston, contract number 14, of four properties for $31,330, AK Grading and Demolition of La Grange, contract number 15, three properties for $28,500, AK Grading and Demolition Incorporated, La Grange, North Carolina, contract number 17, four properties for $58,800. And we're looking for approval of this memorandum.
Madam Chair, we're looking at total of 11 properties.
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Crunkler, where are your properties located off the top of your head, if you know?
Most of them are probably in Seven Springs, I would say.
Seven Springs?
Yeah.
Nothing in?
There may be some in Old Hood Drive, I mean, yes.
Okay, one percent.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Do what?
Madam Chair, make a motion that we accept the bids.
Okay. Mr. Freeman made a motion to approve the memorandum for RSM Harris Associates. Do I have a motion on the floor, I mean, a vote on the floor, raise your hand. Motion carried.
All righty. Uh, we're. All righty. We're moving on to county managers' report. I don't have any comments today. We're moving along to the board of commissioners' committee reports.
All right, Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to meet with the JCPC, me and actually our clerk Carol was there as well, and got an opportunity to learn what the board is doing. A great group of individuals that are caring about our young people here in this community, trying to, to help with some of the challenges that our young people face here. So just great opportunity to go and be a part of that board. Thank you.
Mr. Echot?
Madam Chair, see that we did have scheduled the opioid workshop? And it was nice to hear all that information. But at some point, I think our board is going to have to determine how we're going, what's the process moving forward. I think you were at that meeting, and a number of us went to a meeting with someone that was very interested in moving forward. Are we going to go through an RFP, asking for people to make proposals? Or what is the next process? I would ask that you work with our county manager and develop that. And hopefully, at our next meeting, we can make some determination.
Okay.
First of all, if you're a faculty member, well, that's true. We're going to have to decide that. And then we're going to have to decide how we're going to go out and, and ask for people to submit their proposals. But anyway, if you all could work on that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Echot?
I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Echot?
Only thing I'd just like to remind everyone that the Wayne County Fire Department Association's annual banquet is tonight at Lane Tree at 7:00. And all of y'all are invited to go. And I'd like for fire departments, if there's any on list, and fire departments, please participate in that, because it's a very important event. And we're going to have a dynamic speaker tonight.
Okay. I don't have anything. Thank you.
What about you?
They know who it is.
Need a motion to go in the closed session?
Do I have a motion to go in closed session?
I move, be for the same reasons that you went in earlier this morning.
We are now in closed session?
And then they're going to come back.
We are now back in open session. I think Commissioner Echot would like to say something?
Yes, I, when we gave our comments a while ago, I did not mention anything about the college. I just wanted to let everyone know that the new continuing ed building at the college is moving forward. The new driving pad and driving facility for the truck driving program is going forward. And they're also going to incorporate in the driving pad, so the first responders, like fire department, EMS, sheriff, and whatever, will be able to use that facility outside. And just a thought of the day, if you learn nothing from life, if you think you're always right, if you think you're right all the time, you'll accomplish nothing. So keep that in mind.
Oh, Commissioner?
That's it.
Okay, anything else before we adjourn? We adjourn?